All right, thank you all for being here this evening. Today is Monday, November 1st, 2021. The time is 6:00 PM. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Neal? He's here, he is here. He'll be up in a moment. I apologize, I didn't look left to right. Councilmember Hughes?
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cortez?
Here.
And Mayor Walter is here. We're going to wait a moment and then we will stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll go ahead and open up our first call to the public. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak this evening? I do see three attendees joining us virtually. If you would like to speak, please go ahead and raise your hand. Seeing none such moved, I'll go ahead and close the first call to the public. Item 6A, Presentations. The first item is a proclamation declaring November 2021 as Alzheimer's and Caregiver Month. This was a request that did come in through the Penale County Attorney's Office. They are unable to be here this evening. Reading the proclamation into record, Alzheimer's and Caregiver Month, whereas the town of Florence, Arizona recognizes the importance of the Alzheimer's and related dementia care, and whereas Alzheimer's and related dementia have significant impact on the health and the well-being of residents, and whereas more than 150,000 Arizonians live with Alzheimer's, which is the fifth-leading cause of death in the state. And Arizonians are actively engaged in educating about the disease, advocating for a proper continuum of care, and improving the training and care of patients with Alzheimer's disease and related dementias. And whereas the town of Florence supports in Arizona without Alzheimer's, addressing this health public crisis. Therefore, I, Tara Walter, Mayor of the town of Florence, Arizona, do hereby proclaim November 2021 to be Alzheimer's and Caregivers Month in this community, and encourage our residents to learn about Alzheimer's, related dementias, and patient care. Thank you. Our second item under Presentations is Item B. This is a presentation on the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce Tourism website. At this time, I will go ahead and call forward Mr. Roger Beatty, the Chamber Director. He is going to provide an update on the Discover Florence, Arizona, which highlighted the following.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers and staff, and everybody joining us online. Going back about a year, the town of Florence and the Chamber partnered in a matching grant, matching funds grant with Arizona Tourism to help us promote Florence and get word out. As part of that, we did a whole, we did a number of print advertising, but also with a little bit of the money, we also developed a tourism package, if you will, a theme, some logos, which we've previously discussed, and launched this website, which Dog Cat and Mouse Media and Local First Arizona and Arizona Tourism helped us put it together. So this website is an all-encompassing tourism website for the town. It'll incorporate every, hopefully, knock on wood, everything that's going on, the businesses, the attractions, the events, the lodging, everybody, all the stores, and everything that we can do to provide and get people to come to Florence. So this will be separate from the Chamber. This will be, you know, like I said, tourism only, and we will continue to use Chamber funds and funds that we can acquire for advertising to keep this active and to keep it growing and keep it relevant and current. So as you can see, I think everybody can see it online, it goes through, and most of the pictures right now are Michael Baca's, which I think we all know and love, but as the, as the website grows, we will be pulling things off Instagram and adding other artists or other photographers' work to it. Michael Baca was nice enough to help share his work with it to get the, get the website initially launched. But for those that took part in the tourism exercise, we kind of picked the minds of a number of different businesses, a number of different people around Florence, hopefully representing a wide variety, and got kind of a theme going, and the logo, which you can see, is a Western state of mind, which I think I've talked about before, but this website kind of explains that, explains where that came from, and kind of talks about Florence in the way that this group or that we hopefully all kind of think about it. I won't go, won't go through and read it, but it kind of, like I said, gives a history and hopefully makes people want to come and visit and see what the, why we all love our town and why we are here. Again, it's a tourism website, so if you're going to come here, it'll show attractions, what's to do, where to eat, where to shop for, and exploring nearby areas. We're going to incorporate day trips into this, so if people come to the area, they can go see the ruins, then come to Florence for lunch, and then maybe go see the boulders or various things like that. We'll have a number of day trips for people to explore the area and include Florence as part of that. Lodging, hopefully that's something that Alon can help us with as we grow the town and, and have some more lodging, but we'll also think about including some of the B&Bs and the Airbnbs also as we move forward and have more places to us, to stay here in Florence. Events, like I said, will keep this active. Some of the bigger events are already listed in Things That Are Coming. Some of the things that are yearly events are already listed, and as other events pop up on the calendar, we will add those. And hopefully, this is easy to find with big pictures, so people will be excited and come and be, be excited about what's going on in Florence and all the different things. Hopefully, if just looking at the things, the initial input of it, it shows that there are a lot of things, almost every weekend, definitely every month, to come to Florence, and there's lots of reasons to be here. A blog is something that the Chamber will be doing, keeping updates of what's going on, exciting things that have happened, updates in the town, and just again, trying to drive business and drive people to come to Florence. And then, the contact is, I don't need to explain that. But the last thing, which you didn't see because we kind of loaded, preloaded it, as you come onto this website, it will ask you for your email address if you'd like to be on the mailing list of the Events page, and that's something that goes out twice a month. We'll be updating people on the, on events in Florence and what's going on, and already, and we haven't really launched it yet, already we have 25 people that have opted in to receive updates from, from the website on, on events and other happenings in Florence. So that's the update. I won't go through it bit by bit. We're still working on it. One other thing we're adding, which I thought was going to be added, but maybe it just hasn't updated on the server yet, is the autism, autism certification, and that'll explain our efforts and explain, also list out all the stores and entities that have participated and received certification already. So that, they worked on this morning, and I'm surprised it's not up yet. So much as, must just be updating. So, any questions? That was easy. Thank you for your time. Have a great night.
Thank you so much.
Bye-bye.
Our next presentation this evening is a presentation on Fiscal Year 2021/2022 First Quarter Financial Report. Ms. Becky Jimenez and Carl Dudding.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Town Council. Tonight, Carl Dudding, our Deputy Finance Director, will be presenting this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. As Becky said, we're going to look at our Q1 revenue and expense forecast. First thing we'll look at is our general fund revenues. We're going to look at the seven major revenue sources. These make up 85% or more of the general fund's revenue, and they encompass taxes, our state shared revenues, and billing permits and fees. Sales tax revenue came in at $855,000 for the quarter. Our property tax came in at $3,000. The majority of that will flow in in December and in April as people pay their property tax. Our state shared sales tax came in at $748,000. State shared income tax, $890,000. Auto license tax, $421,000. Billing permits, $320,000. And development fees, $153,000. Our general fund expenditures for the quarter came in at $3.5 million. You'll see last quarter, last year, quarter one, we had $1.5 million in expenses, and that was offset by the CARES Act, the $2 million that went to the Public Safety Police and Fire. The other major fund revenues, our general capital fund, we received $92,000. HERF, $437,000. Transportation excise tax, $317,000. You'll notice that the HERF last year was $703,000. Last year, or this year, we split the HERF and the excise tax for clarity and reporting. Our water fund came in $974,000. Wastewater, $973,000. Sanitation fund, $262,000. The other major fund expenditures, the general capital fund, $238,000. The HERF fund, $843,000. Transportation excise tax is zero, those, like I stated on the revenue, they were split out. The water fund, $411,000. Wastewater, $379,000. Sanitation fund, $267,000. Our cash in bank, we have $7.8 million in liquid. We have $78.5 million investments, the majority of that's in the PFM investment account, and our police evidence fiduciary account has $21,000. Total cash, $86.5 million. Some things going on in the finance department. We are wrapping up the audit. We hope to be, before council in November, probably early December, to present it with our auditors. Budget season is here. Becky just rolled out the capital projects worksheets, and hopefully those will be turned in before the end of December. And the utility meter upgrade project, we spoke a lot about that, it's been going on for two years. All the meters have been put in the ground and are working. And the final piece is the Water Smart Project, and this is the customer portal where customers can log in, set alerts and thresholds. And Stacy has been auditing it because we're taking data from three different places and consolidating it, and so we have to do a lot of checks and balances, and we hope to be live December 1st. And a letter will be going out to all residents via US Mail explaining this product and the values. And that's it.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
I just wanted to provide some feedback. It'd be really helpful for me. I know in the past where we've had the arrows and the colors that show whether we're doing good in this criteria or not for each item. I know Becky's laughing at me. I like it to be where it's readable for the public because a lot of those numbers did not look favorable when you're comparing them to last year's numbers, and so, but I, it's easier to analyze that on a quick glance by having that, so.
And Becky and I have both looked at the numbers. We're, we're on target for budget. Obviously, this is Q1, crystal ball's not as clear as it is in Q3, but we can definitely bring those back. And a lot of the differences Q1 versus Q1 last year is the timing and how information gets put into our system. So we can tighten that up, but we'll definitely bring those indicators back.
I'd certainly like to see a comparison, and if we are on track to meet our goals for the budget for each item, that'd be great.
Okay. Thank you.
I do not see any additional questions. Thank you so much for that. Item number seven is our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is to accept the Register of Demands ending September 30th, 2021, in the amount At this time, we need a motion.
I motion, we approve consent agenda as read.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item eight, unfinished business. A, Resolution Number 1794-21. This is discussion approval disapproval of a resolution of the town of Florence, Penale County, Arizona, ordering the proposed street lighting improvements described in Resolution Number 1793-21, forming the town of Florence, Arizona Sunrise Estates Phase 2 Streetlight Improvement District 7. At this time, I'll call forward Mr. Chris Ellis.
Mayor, members of council, I'd like to jump in. This is for the adoption of Sunrise Estates Phase 2 SLID. We did go forward, we did advertise it, we did put it up for a period of where it was both posted, posted in the newspaper, and we did receive zero appeals or challenges to the SLID. So at this point, the final step is to adopt it, and then what we do is we send that notice on to the Recorder's Office, and then they give notice to the property owners. We would like to note that we are past the September date so that there would be no SLID collection in this fiscal year.
All right, thank you so much. And again, this is not the first time this has come before us. Is there any members of council that has any questions regarding this item? Seeing no such move, at this time, we need a motion.
I make a motion, we approve item 8A, Resolution Number 1794-21.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item nine, new business. A, discussion approval disapproval to accept five military-themed benches, benches at the Veterans Memorial Plaza. Mr. Hezekiah Allen.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Hezekiah Allen with the Community Services Department. We are very excited to be bringing this item before you. This is basically, it's been a long-term project to kind of get this done, get some seating at the facility. This is the Veterans Memorial Plaza, kind of across the street from Town Hall on the backside of Community Services Building. Right there, now there's a, an eagle in the middle, as well as the flags, and basically, these five benches will surround the eagle, and they'll represent each branch of the military. We worked with ACI to get these designed, our town manager worked with Polty Homes to get the, the funding donated for this project. So we're asking council to authorize us to approve accepting these assets, and we did take this before the Community Services Advisory Board, and they did approve of the design.
These benches look really sharp. Mr. Billingsley?
I'd just like to add a couple sentiments. This whole project came about based on a conversation in a, in a meeting that I believe the mayor and Councilman Anderson had with the Polty's Homeowners Association about a year ago, where there was discussion of building a second Veterans Memorial. And I believe the mayor and, and council member at that time said to the group that we already have a Veterans Memorial, and we plan for it to have a second phase, and we sure would like participation to, to assist in that manner. So that, that kind of got things going in this conversation. I would also be remiss if I didn't say that Councilman Anderson has really dedicated a lot of time and effort. I know his son worked on the initial design for the Veterans Memorial. Once we completed the conceptual design for the benches, Councilman Anderson actually came down with staff and worked with us on the layout and how the, the benches would occur on the site. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody got their credit.
Councilmember Anderson, would you like to say a few words?
Well, yes, I want to thank Hezekiah for all his work that he's done here to, to bring this forward because it has been something that we've been working on for several years, and I want to thank all the, the other councilmen for their ongoing support. I think this is going to be something that's going to be with us, and it's going to make a nice place for our veterans and our citizens to, to come and sit down and have a cup of coffee and recognize what's going on, and sort of take a break during the day. And the benches themselves are just unbelievable. So, thank you very much.
Does any other council members have anything? Seeing no such move, at this time, we need a motion to accept.
Well, I would like to make a motion to accept the benches for the Veteran Memorial Plaza.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number B is discussion approval disapproval to authorize the town of Florence to purchase 4,990 extinguishment credits at $93.30 per credit from Greenstone Water Credits LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, for Penale Active Management Area extinguishment credits in an amount not to exceed $465,567. At this time, I will turn it over to our town manager, Mr. Billingsley.
Madam Mayor, members of council, it's that time of year again. Four years ago, we came before council with an idea to enhance our, our water portfolio and provide assistance in terms of financial investment in our, in our water sustainability here in Florence. It was, it was quite an effort, and it resulted in three separate agreements. The first agreement was an agreement with the Tonopah Irrigation and Drainage District by which they would recharge our CAP allotment of about 2,000 acre feet in the Phoenix AMA. Once that recharge occurs in the Phoenix AMA, those credits are then deposited in our account, and we then sell those credits through an agreement, a separate agreement that we have with the Central Arizona Groundwater Replenishment District and CAP, and we get cash for that. We then take the cash that we receive from the Central Arizona Groundwater Replenishment District, and we purchase long-term storage credits in the Penale AMA. By doing that, we more than double the amount of credits that, that we would be able to accomplish recharging in the Penale AMA. It's been a very successful contract, and we have, we now have over 30,000 acre feet of water credits for our future sustainability in Florence, and that's a very exciting thing. I'm sure many of you have heard from both the town staff and other agencies that Florence is in an excellent position for water sustainability going forward, and there's a lot of issues and troubles that other communities are having in, in Penale County and in the Penale AMA at this time. So we support, we really appreciate council support in these investments in our water sustainability. We did get notice from Central Arizona Project that following our contract here, which is next year, they do not want to continue forward buying our credits. So at this time, we've got a little over a year to work on another solution to continue this water sustainability effort. But that's essentially what this is tonight, is we're selling about 1,800 acre feet of water, and we're able to purchase 5,000 acre feet of water for, for that same transaction.
Thank you very much for that. Council, are there any comments or questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Proceed.
This is sort of a loaded question. You said we have 30,000. How many would we need, or how much acre feet of water would we need to line up with our general plan as far as expansion?
Well, that is a loaded question. So, our issues on the general plan and build out of the community and service of the community years and years, decades in the future, goes much farther than actual retirement credits and underground storage credits. These credits are an assistance to offset from CAGRID charges. I think six of you are in the upcore service area, and every month you have a surcharge that, that goes specifically to CAGRID, which essentially doubles your water usage bill. The residents of Florence have zero CAGRID charge because we're not in a place where we don't have enough water that we have to dip into additional supply and utilize CAGRID at this time. So it's tremendously beneficial under our designation. Our water designation for Florence is a little over 15,000 acre feet. We only pump about 1,800 acre feet out of that 15,000. So, once we reach a threshold to where we'd have to use CAGRID, instead of paying that CAGRID fee, we would be able to utilize these credits to offset those charges. The issue, as discussed in the general plan work session last week, is beyond that. It's, it's water that's needed beyond our existing designation, so this doesn't really help with that. This helps us up to our designation for a certain number of years, trying to garner a 100-year water supply. If we grow larger than that designation, then we're going to have to seek outside water supplies, outside what can be provided by groundwater, which our designation is groundwater. So we're going to have to, at some point in our future, seek alternative supplies that are renewable. I, I hope that wasn't a difficult answer, but that's the right answer.
No, thank you. I, I understand what you're saying. We also have a CAP designation that we're, that we're currently selling, right?
Yes, sir.
So that would come into play also.
Yes, sir, absolutely. That's part of our water portfolio, and at some point in the future, our first phase with our CAP, well, I'm going to say three phases. First phase is what we're doing now, which is tremendously beneficial to us in assuring 100-year water supply. Second phase will be delivery of, direct delivery to the town of those CAP assets, and we'll recharge it ourselves. And that's for us to recover with our wells in the future. So that's, that's water above the 15,000 acre foot designation that we can bring to bear. Third phase will be direct use of that CAP water, where at some point in the future, the town will build a treatment plant, will actually treat that CAP water to potable, for potable usage, and deliver that to our customers. So that's how the three phases will work in the future.
Thank you.
You bet.
All right, with no further comments or questions, would that, we need a motion.
Motion, we enter into a contract with Holbrook, oh, am I on the wrong one?
Yes, you are.
I moved way too far ahead, pardon me. We are on C, right? No, B. Sorry. Motion to authorize the town of Florence to purchase 4,990 extinguishment credits at $93.30 per credit from Greenstone Water Credits LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, for Penale Active Management Area extinguishment credits in an amount not to exceed $465,567.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item C, discussion approval disapproval to enter into a cooperative contract with Holbrook Asphalt, using the Cooperative Contract Through the City of Mesa Contract 202-0007 to clean, prepare, and apply HA5 High Density Mineral Bond Advanced to clean, prepare, and apply HA5 High Density Mineral Bond Advanced Performance Pavement Preservation Treatment in an amount not to exceed $346,875.55. At this time, we'll go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Salas.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. As you read, the HA5 product is the same product we've been using for the last five years, and even previous to that, I believe it was 2011-ish. So we're almost 10 years on using this product. Same as the last approvals, City of Mesa has the best prices in the state presently for HA5. And I think it would be important to thank Councilman Anderson for pointing out that our maps were less than perfect. We have the images brought up on the computer if needed, and it was an issue of formatting. So the maps were good, then they weren't good, and they got posted that way. So we've since corrected that, and we understand now the error and what caused that, so hopefully that won't happen again. The images were very blurry and hard to read, as you said. The names of the streets were all but impossible to read. With that, are there any questions?
Counsel, any questions or comments? Seeing no such move, we need a motion. Make a motion to approve. Motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item D, discussion.
Madam Mayor, who was the second?
Sorry, me. I just realized my mic wasn't.
Item D, discussion approval disapproval of the Spring Downtown Events Assistance Program. At this time, I'll call forward Mr. Hezekiah Allen.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Hezekiah Allen with the Community Services Department. So just a little background, we released the fall program, and they were due September 23rd. At that time, we received one submittal. We reviewed that submittal, we're pushing them through the process. As we speak, they've been approved for funding, and then we're working with them on the back end. One of the things we realized is that we only got one application. So, we went back and started doing some community outreach to figure out why we only got one application. We received some great feedback, and that's what you see in front of you, is a product of that feedback we received from the community. The baseline of this program is something that we borrowed from Penal County, and the program is really predicated on economic impact. Programs that bring in more people to the community, have a bigger attendance, the funding's kind of based on that. It still has the council's essence of providing marketing of equivalent value to the level of sponsorship awarded. The Town of Florence will receive credit in all advertising funded through the grant. And again, it's designed to provide economic impact to the community. So, with that, I entertain any questions on the Spring Downtown Events Assistance Program?
Well, first, I want to say thank you for going ahead and taking a look at that again, and having those conversations to find ways that we could make the program more usable. I did have one question, and just overlooking for clarification purposes. On the third page, where we go over the Spring Downtown Events Assistance Program, it shows small event, 20 to 1,000 attendees, and then maximum amount allowed for profit organization, and then for nonprofit organization. Is that per event? Because I know before, we had said each organization could apply for up to, or are we, how is that for clarification purposes? That question may arise.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Council, that would be per event.
Thank you. That makes sense. My other suggestion would be just making sure you're putting it out there to all of the organizations that are in our area that still may not know about it, especially since we're updating it with, you know, the updated revisions and application and a contact of if you have any questions, here's your next steps.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, that was going to be my question, is how have we advertised this change? So we know all of our businesses now understand that it's changed, it's easier to do.
So, Councilmember Anderson, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Anderson, so, we would release this and kind of use the same avenues as an RFP and market it and push it out to the public, and I think we kind of indicated that in the RCA, that we would promote it locally as well as within the region, that this opportunity exists.
Thank you.
You know, another suggestion, and I've seen this lately with the job postings that we've utilized on our social media, is to create, you know, just a social media post that talks about this program, links it to the information.
Thank you. Good point.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing no such move, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the Spring Downtown Events Assistance Program. That's right. Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 10 is our manager's report.
Madam Mayor, I have a couple of things that I've had on my desk for a little while, and I haven't had an opportunity to share, so I'm going to take a chance to, or take an opportunity to share those. The first is a successful grant application that we received specifically through the State Historic Preservation Office. The grant was to do a survey and inventory of our historic resources in the town, and then create a digitized record of that. We did receive that grant we applied for, for a total of $16,000. So that's a good news story. The second one, I promised our fire chief three or four weeks ago, I don't see him. Oh, there he is, that I would bring this up, and I haven't had a chance. So Jim, this one's for you. The Arizona State Fire School was held a few weeks ago, and fire agencies from around the state came together to do a training on all aspects of the fire service. Not only did we have Town of Florence Fire Department members attend, but three of our firefighters were selected to be instructors, and one of our captains, Brad Kells, was featured in a story on Fox 10 News. We also, and I think this is the part that Jim's most proud of, we also sent four of our CERT members to the Arizona Fire Inspector One class, so that we can have a pool of volunteers to assist us with fire inspections on an annual basis. So I think that's really a good news story. So appreciate you bringing that to us, Jim. With respect to the manager's report, a couple of things I'd like to touch on. First, under partnerships and relationships, I hope everybody's had an opportunity to go over to the library and see our newly installed vehicle charging stations. So they are all installed and ready to ride over at the library. They are just south of the solar panels, right in front of the library. That was a partnership, of course, with APS through the Take Charge Program, and a successful project. And at this time, they are free for use, so exciting thing. Another thing that I wanted to mention to council, there's been a number of articles in the Arizona Republic, and a lot of discussion about the Tier One shortage on the Colorado River. As a matter of fact, the Central Arizona Project has been going around and giving presentations to different groups with respect to the Tier One shortage and what that means. So I included a component under Transportation and Infrastructure for council and for the public's review that speaks to the actual shortage of water in Lake Mead, and that municipalities, including Florence, aren't affected by a Tier One shortage. But if the levels in Lake Mead continue to go down, if we reach a point of a Tier Three shortage, then, as Councilmember Anderson said, our CAP allotment, a little over, I think it's 2,048 acre feet, would be impacted with a Tier Three shortage. But at this time, no impact to the Town of Florence. I thought that was important information. The last thing I wanted to touch on is we do a really good job on a monthly basis of giving an economic outlook from a statewide perspective, and things are starting to kind of level off in terms of state revenues. So this is the first month where my report has discussed state general fund revenues and HERF revenues that aren't as strong as they have been for the past nine months. So we're still ahead of projection in the state general fund, but in HERF, we're down from what was projected this year, about 0.3% or 0.3 million at this point, which isn't anything to be scared of, but I think it's important to look at those indicators and see what they mean from a state level. And then lastly, we're continuing to see a drawdown at the Arizona State Central Unit Prison Complex. We have reduced by an additional 68 inmates over the last month. So, we're down from 3,589 now to 2,297. So they're continuing to draw down. That's my manager's report.
Thank you so much for that. Appreciate that. Department reports, is there any member of our council that had a question or comment for department reports? All right. Just want to say thank you. Especially when I was getting ready for our budget presentation this evening, I had looked at, it's a page 187, and it talks about our general fund. And if you look at where we were projected to be at this time and where we actually are, it looks like we're 1.9 million ahead of where we were expected to be. So I look at that, and, you know, and hearing our manager's report and talking about the, you know, the inmate decrease, I always look at our building permits and how they continue to rise, and the population that is being added into our community, and the fact that these are households of families that they live, work, play in Florence. So I really do appreciate the effort that our department heads put into preparing these documents, because it really gives us a holistic picture of our community. Seeing no further, go ahead and have our second call to the public for this evening. If you are in person or online, if you would just give that hand raise. Seeing no such move, we'll go ahead and close our second call to the public this evening, and we will move on to our call to the council. Councilmember Mendoza?
I don't have anything at this time.
Councilmember Neal?
I have nothing.
Councilmember Hughes?
I personally want to thank Councilman Anderson for working so hard on the memorial area and getting all the different segments. He's worked tirelessly over that. I just really wanted to appreciate that. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
I think everybody echoes those sentiments. Councilmember Rodriguez?
I just wanted to say thank you for our community for having a fantastic Halloween. I know I was out with my kids, and we had a great time. I went down here to the Fight Fest as well, and I want to say thank you for, Hezekiah, for organizing all of that, and as much as time and effort and energy that went into it, it was packed, and it was great to see our community out and enjoying themselves. So I wanted to say thank you for that. One side note that I also wanted to mention, I know the survey questions that Lisa's working on have been discussed already, and I apologize I wasn't there for that meeting, but when we're prioritizing the projects that we want as a council moving forward, I think it's part of our holistic vision to also have opportunities for our youth, and I know that there's opportunities in the parks, is a lot of the questions are being asked. And again, I would be remiss if I didn't advocate for the skate park idea, just because I know that we don't have one that's really up to scale, and not saying it has to be a master amazing skate park, but something that would be a great opportunity for us to improve upon. And so I would just request that that would also be taken into consideration in the future.
The survey has not gone out yet, so I would support adding that question on to gain public insight and feedback in regards to their view on skate parks. And we can ask all of council that after the meeting, and then we can sign off prior to the survey going out. Councilmember Anderson?
Well, I have two things. One, I want to thank everyone for the accolades for the Veteran Memorial. That was sort of an easy thing for me to do, because I had total support. I never had anybody object to anything that we wanted to do out there, so I want to thank the council, I want to thank the American Legion, and there's so many people who were involved in it. There's a group of veterans out in Sun Lakes that played an important role to get it started. Matter of fact, it was almost like a challenge, because I was campaigning. And I had a meeting, I think Tara might have been there too. We were invited to a meeting by the veterans group out in Sun City, and I found out that the reason they invited me was not to hear about my campaign, but to set me up. And their question was, when are you going to build a Vet Memorial? And that's what sort of got it started, but I want to thank Dan Hoover and his team for encouraging me to get that done. Second thing, I have been talking to the State Land Department, and I found out that there is a state land map, and they show all of the state land, and I've talked to a couple of guys at the State Land Department, and they've been very cooperative and very nice, and I learned a lot, and I learned primarily that they're not going to lease any more land. If you want land, they will sell it to you, but it's quite a process. It has to go up for public bid, and so if we have designs on a piece of land somewhere that's, you know, and there's a lot of state land that's within the town limits, and that's something that we should be looking at when we talk about our long-term planning, but if we are considering that, we need to start through the process, and it, you know, they told me it'd probably take two to three years to buy a piece of land from the state. We can put that in our planning cycle. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I'm just not functioning today, I guess. I don't really have anything, I've just been staying home trying to rest my foot, so I didn't attend the event, I apologize. But I did hear they were great, so, as always, we get a lot of accolades for our events, and John, of course, has worked really hard on that Veterans Memorial, and it's beautiful, so I can't wait to see people sitting there and enjoying it. That's it.
All right. I do not have anything that has not already been said this evening, so with that, we are going to go ahead and adjourn to a work session. With that, we need a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn to a work session.
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.